I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, November 13th, 2012 Waschuggal City Council Meeting. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Polinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenly.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you, Rose. We're at that first opportunity for anyone in the public that would like to address council before we get started this evening.
I'm here.
Anyone at all? Okay, scene then, we'll start into our presentations. We've got two presentations this evening. The first one from the West Columbia Gorge Humane Society. Tamara, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Bye, Chris. I do have a brochure about our agency, so maybe you want to take one and pass it around. Sorry, I'm just going to do my uniform here. So my name is Tamara Sharfinkamp, and I am the new and first executive director for the West Columbia Gorge Humane Society. And I, first of all, obviously, want to thank you for having the opportunity to speak to you and let you know about the new and, dare we say, improved West Columbia Gorge Humane Society. If you want to go ahead and forward to the next slide. A couple of things that we wanted to make sure that you were aware of about us, of course, that's in the brochure is, as you probably well know, that we are a nonprofit organization, obviously. And one of the things that we are most significantly proud of is that we do hold the title of being Clark County's only no-kill shelter. So we are extremely excited about those opportunities that we're able to provide for the community. We do have a working board of directors that, in addition to their full-time jobs, submit or, sorry, contribute approximately at a minimum of 10, if not in excess of 60 hours in a month of volunteer time to us. We operate with three part-time paid staff, including myself as an executive director, being part-time, and we donate approximately equal amounts of the budget of time that we are paid for. We volunteer that amount of time back to the agency as well. And what's most significant, I think, about our current volunteer base, well, we have about 165 people who may claim official volunteer status with us. We probably have about 45 to 65 that are truly active. And that volunteer base truly does represent 98 percent of the staffing needs of the West Columbia Gorge Humane Society going forward. So some of the things that I wanted to make sure that I thought was important for you to know about the initiatives that we have for 2013 is that the things that we're trying to do with our dollars has certainly not been spent on aesthetics. More than 80 cents of every dollar that's donated to the West Columbia Gorge Humane Society is directly put into the medical care and welfare of the animals in our care. And in fact, our medical costs alone exceed our payroll cost by no less than three times over what our payroll is. So we are definitely committed to the animals that are in our care. For 2013, though, some of the things that we feel like as an agency that we need to be responsible for in being stewardships and consideration of stewardship for our community is certainly, one, providing community health and education. We cannot adopt our way out of pet overpopulation. We know that currently for every one pet birth, there's approximately 35 animal births. So anybody a family of four, five? Start doing the math. Times 35, you ready? Because I've got a shelter full to send home with you alone, since no one else is brave enough to raise their hand, right? So, I mean, that would just be to keep up with the pet overpopulation problem. So obviously, you know, adoption is not alone the answer. We also have to be very proactive in providing spaying and neutering services for the members of our community. In fact, one female cat alone in seven years with her offspring can create as many as 420,000 pets. And if you add the male that contributed to that relationship, it's over, in nine years, it's 9,800,000 pets that can be created through them and their offsprings if we do not spay and neuter pets. So as an initiative in 2013, one of the things that we are most concerned about in providing health and education initiatives to our community is not only a spay and neuter effort to decrease then the reason to potentially warehouse or find shelter space for these animals that have been born from indiscriminate litters. But as a safety issue for our communities, we're seeing, of course, the feral colonies that populate the cities that are definitely a concern for any individual that cohabitates in our society. We do not, obviously, want any diseases and other zoonotic instances to spread through our communities. And again, spaying and neutering is the single most effective means to decreasing those unwanted populations. But we can't just provide community health and education. We can provide water, but we can't lead the horse. So the other thing we need to do is partner with other community organizations. And we have forged forward with some great partnerships, not excluding, and this is not, obviously, an inclusive list, Pongo Fund. The number-one reason that the ASPCA says that people are relinquishing their pets to shelter is they aren't able to provide food. We partnered with the Pongo Fund to receive food now at intermittent basis whenever I need food, so that I can help Clark County pet owners, and they don't longer have to relinquish their pet to the shelter. It's a huge support to us. Fences for Fido. Our volunteers also go out in the community and help build fences so that we can take pets who would normally be territorial and become aggressive by living a life on a chain, by donating time to build fences so that those animals can come off chains. And again, then we can let them know about the other resources we provide. And then additionally, one of the things that we are most excited about is a partnership with the Humane Society for Southwest Washington, where we can begin to receive some much-needed veterinary care and services at shelter medicine prices and with shelter medicine needs. Private practice vets obviously serve a purpose in our community, and we need their partnership as well. But without shelter medicine prices, we have a recipe for disaster in treating the amount of animals that we see. And then the third caveat to our initiatives for 2013 would be preserving the pet ownership in the community. So again, negating the need for families to bring their pets to us by providing the necessary food and basic needs that they need through our food pantry, and additionally then through providing spay and neuter resources so that they themselves do not come upon litter, upon litter, upon litter, whether it be an own pet or one in their community. So, in 2013, those are the initiatives that we feel are most important. And again, just to let you know, 80 percent of every dollar goes back into the animals that we serve, and we're really proud about that. So if there's any questions, I'd certainly love to answer those, but my intent was to just at least give you an idea of the successes and the benchmarks that we've been able to achieve and the excitement that we have for 2013 about the additional services that we'll be able to provide to Camas and Waschuggal as a community at whole.
Rose, can we get some lights back? Questions from council? Jennifer?
Yes.
Hi, Tamara, thank you for coming out.
Very welcome.
I do have a question regarding your presentation. Are the 2012 numbers looking similar as far as income and expenses?
Unfortunately, income is going down a little bit. We are coming off of the, one of the largest kitten seasons that we've had, and because traditionally, that's, again, an underfunded and underserved population, is felines in general. We saw our medical expenses jump to anywhere from $10,000 to $14,000 per month singularly for approximately three months over the course of the summer. And that was definitely a setback for us financially.
Okay, do you ever refuse to take a feline? I know that the Southwest Washington actually cut off people from being able to drop off their felines.
Unfortunately, at one point, we did have to institute a waiting list. We offer two programs that we're able to provide for the community. One is called Foster to Adopt, where they can foster a pet for a 30-day period of time that gets them out of the shelter and back into a home. But additionally, what we offer in addition to the waiting list is home-to-home. So if you contact me, and for whatever reason you're not able to care for your feline or your canine either way, we can, but you're allowed, but you're still able to care for that pet while we're looking for a new home. We can then set you up in a program and begin to provide the care necessary for that pet to make it adoptable while it's in the care of your home. And then we advertise it, and hopefully, we transition it into a new home, avoiding the shelter environment 100 percent. And so we've seen a lot of success and growth in that area, as well as our foster homes in the last few months as well.
Okay, and the operating costs on that slide?
Mm-hmm.
Are those combined with dogs and cats?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
So I'm looking at the city contracts, $18,767 for 2011, and I'm just curious, you know, you know, as far as the expenses, what?
We collectively put dogs and cats under one umbrella. You know, I know traditionally, there's been some funding and ideology about the ways that we have funding streams that draw into the shelter. But as an executive director, one of the things that I felt strongly about is, you know, we certainly need to be an umbrella of dog and cat services. And as a whole, we're still a service to the community as a shelter, regardless of where those funding streams may come to us from.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
What happens to the pets that aren't adopted?
They continue to get loved and snuggled by me on a daily basis.
How long do you keep them?
As long as we need to. We are a lifetime commitment shelter. So the only time that, again, so we may ask someone to join a waiting list for us, but once we've made a commitment to a pet, we have made that commitment to the pet for the lifetime of that pet. Including if someone adopts from us and then is no longer able to care for the pet, they're required by contract to bring it back to us, because we have a relationship, obviously, established with that pet, and we would like to make sure that we're responsible for the rehoming of that pet as needed again in the future.
Thank you.
You bet.
Dave? Refund, fundraiser out at the golf club, how did that go?
You know, we were really happy with the fundraiser this year. Unfortunately, the expense of the event were greater than what it had been in the past, so that impacted our bottom line. And again, as an agency, one of the things that we feel like that really separates us out from many initiatives is that we're not interested in spending a half a million dollars to make a million dollars a year. If anybody wants to give us a million dollars, I'm not trying to say that we're not here to accept it. You know, but we're looking at spending, you know, maybe $5,000 to make $35,000. You know, we, again, we try and be very humble. And in our initiatives that we have collectively partnered with other agencies, at times, they're asking for maybe $300 to $500 for T-shirts to commemorate event. We just, you know, we see that $300 or $500 as providing another 18 to 20 surgeries. You know, so we're really trying to fiscally be responsible for that. And we would like to think that in the future, then, that our fundraising events, you know, also reflect that philosophy.
Are your donations up?
They're down. They're down. Unfortunately, yep.
I'll see if I can get the word out.
We, what we're seeing increasingly is, of course, one area's geriatric pet owners that are no longer able to care for their pets, and so we frequently get a request for somebody whose owner's died. And then we have cats that are perhaps 18, 16 years old, very difficult, maybe at times to adopt, but again, need a place to go. Or we're seeing a lot of veterans right now specifically that have called us, either because they've been called back up to service and they have no place to take their pet at this point, there's no resources available to them, or they're in a situation where a gentleman last week had two dogs and four cats, and he was only able to keep one dog, one cat, and needed help with all the rest, because he was going to be moving into a Veterans Disability Assisted Living Center that would allow him to keep one of each. So it's a reflection of the economic times that we're all in, you know. And again, I think that that's one of the reasons why our food pantry is so significantly important. The more that we're able to help provide the basic resources that people need to keep a pet in their home, and again, preserve that family unit, because for those of us that, you know, our pets aren't our pets, they're our kids, you know? I mean, and you see stories all the time, it's a medical condition for whatever it is, and whatever your feeling are about pets, you know, if they're yours and they're a member of your family, well, there's no really point in debating that. You know, that's tried and true for somebody, and the last thing that I want to see somebody if that's the only thing they have left in their life is to have that taken away from them, because they can't afford the food.
Thank you.
You bet.
I noticed in your income that you had a spike in other in 2011. You had, 2009, it went from $12,000 to $20,000, 2010, $28,000, 2011, $68,000.
Are you talking about income? I'm sorry, without seeing that. Do you have that where I can, just so I can visually see what you're looking at? I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, looks like whatever it was kind of saved your bacon.
Tamara, that was the donation. We received a $30,000 donation from a private donor for Feline Fresh Air Project. It's built on the back of our property, and that was received in 2011. Tamara wasn't here, so I don't know if she would.
Our Feline Fresh Air Project does add significantly on to approximately 1,000 square feet of free roam, feline roam, feline cat housing, sorry. So out back now, they have an area where it's completely secure, that they can go out and enjoy some fresh air and some sunshine. At the moment, they're not accessing that space until we have another issue resolved, because it's disturbing for them to be out there. But, yeah, we're hopeful that they'll be able to begin to appreciate that $30,000 investment.
Paul? I'm just, I'm just curious about feral colonies. We've heard about the one that's over at the port close to Wesley Ford.
Correct.
Are there any other feral cat populations that you're, that you're aware of?
Yes, there's currently about five that we're tracking in the Camas-Washuggal area alone, somewhere around, some apartment complexes. And again, what we know is, again, with the female in the litter at Wesley Ford, she's approximately responsible for eight litters in four years. So then if you take all of the queens that she may have produced, and again, and we look at the toms, exponentially, those numbers are just ridiculous, they really are, for the amount that we can take to spay and neuter, then to trap, spay and neuter, and release them, saving thousands of lives with one spay and neuter, easily.
And I haven't heard of feral dog populations. Are they a problem?
They exist, but in our community, fortunately, we don't have an issue with that. Right now, really, our underserved population is the feline population, because our animal control services don't respond to that. There's not a funding that's set aside for that. So frequently, what we get is, again, just somebody in the neighborhood that's noticed them and trying to either trap and take care of them as they can, or they're just feeding them, because they don't want to see them starve. And more frequently, that's what happens. So unfortunately, you know, you feed a hungry cat, it's going to come back. And I'm the last person to say, we obviously don't want to feed them, but the problem being is that we're not correcting the problem. You know, we have to spay and neuter. It's the only way that we can, we can make a dent in this situation.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions from council?
Yep, I have just one more quick question or possibly a comment regarding claiming your pets on off-hours.
Yes.
I've had a couple of citizens talk to me about not being able to claim their pet during off-hours, because they haven't been able to pay their fines.
Sure.
City Hall and so on and so forth. So is there some sort of negotiations going on, or is there something going on with the city to enable?
Yep.
The Humane Society to be able to accept money and so forth?
We have entered into conversations with the city about doing that. I did have a meeting scheduled, the Chief of Police and the Director of Finance, to discuss the situation. Unfortunately, I had volunteers that did not show up that day to cover the shelter, and our city contract requires us to be open certain hours. So again, with 98 percent of our staffing needs covered by volunteers, one of the situations we frequently get ourselves into is if somebody doesn't call and doesn't show up in that situation, and we have another meeting scheduled, we're caught then of being open to the public and honoring our schedule to the city versus going and attending a meeting, then it would also help accomplish that goal. So we still have it on the agenda, and we're definitely looking at that, and I've made some steps, put some protocols in place to help make that an easy transition. And it's just now rescheduling that meeting and making time for each of us to sit down and discuss how that will work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet. Absolutely. 23 percent of our reclaims and intakes actually come on the weekends, which is not a time that's currently been contracted for us to be open. But over the two, from 2012, from January to two weeks ago, I took home and I cross-correlated every single date of intake and reclaim. And the single greatest days were Wednesday, in addition then to Saturdays and Sundays. So we have 23 percent of the time received permission essentially from the city to then release a dog back to their owner on a day that we weren't currently previously open to the public for that purpose. So we'd like to concretize that and make it a regular part of our policies and procedures, and provide it to the city rather than an exception to the rule.
Thank you.
Anything else from council?
You said you wanted to adopt a dog? Who was that? No? Okay, thought I'd try. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Only hairless ones.
What's that? A hairless lion? There's hairless Mexicans.
The last time you were represented here, I talked about shedding dogs, and somebody suggested online that I adopt a hairless dog.
The designer breeds? That was probably.
Was that you?
They're great for being hypoallergenic.
Good.
Okay, our second presentation this evening is from Paul Dennis, the Camas-Washuggal Economic Development Association. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Guard. I'd like to thank Waschuggal City Council as well, Port of Camas-Washuggal and the city of Camas for supporting our economic development efforts. Tonight, I want to be able to provide you an update on what we've been involved with over the last year. As you recall, this time last year, we were speaking before all three entities at a single meeting. This year, we're going through to each meeting and trying to provide you an update on what we're working on. There's four areas I'd like to discuss with you: branding and marketing, planning and outreach, general economic conditions, what are the conditions that we're operating under, just so you can get a sense, I think everybody's familiar with that, and then business development. What specific efforts are we doing in terms of business development? In terms of branding, Camas-Washuggal Economic Development Association hired Black Ops out of Portland last year to help us develop our unique brand. Our brand is our visual voice, our face to the public. Every material we produce, we want to make sure that it's tightly threaded together, both in terms of typeface, coloring, look, everything, so that when people pick up one of our collateral materials, they know exactly who we are. Black Ops, we chose them because they've done a lot of work with major organizations such as Nike and the Smithsonian. They have a lot of depth in terms of trying to provide branding, try to figure out what makes us unique in the marketplace. They produced a number of logos. This is the one that we ultimately ended up choosing. Go to next slide. I don't want to read off every little bullet. Also, we retain the services of the local web development company, Workshed. They've been working on our website. In fact, we just actually met today. If you go to the site, you'll notice that there are a few things that didn't quite work right on the site, and that's why it's called a draft website. Today, we went through all of that. We're hopeful by the end of, well, next week, if not the end of the following weeks, yes, next week is Thanksgiving, that we'll actually have a fully functioning website. We've been busy developing partnerships with regional brokers, associations to draw visibility to the Camas-Washuggal area, such as the Columbia River Economic Development Council, the Southwest Washington Workforce Development Council, the Camas-Washuggal Chamber of Commerce, and Innovate Washington. There used to be a couple different separate entities that were handling some broad-level economic development for the state. Last year, the legislature combined them two and spun them off into its own separate 501(c)(3) foundation. It's now called Innovate Washington. That organization provides business services in terms of, business accelerated services in terms of helping companies figure out how to better manage themselves, also helping with some of the permitting issues, if there are those. And then also, they carry several investment funds. So they're looking at providing funds to companies, not necessarily startups, what we would call more Stage Two, which is a company that has been through that R&amp;D, has gone through the development, thinks they have a product that's ready to commercialize. They don't quite have the funds to get it to market, and so they're a partner, as well as trying to not just provide money, but also help partner with other companies. They're actually helping us on several of our recruitments right now. We've received a lot of press locally, regionally, and nationally. We've been leveraging our success in those new articles to generate other leads. Bloomberg News did a little article on us, spring of this year. And then in terms of, in terms of leads, very few of our solid leads have come from cold calls. In other words, us just picking up the phone and just calling XYZ company. Most of our leads are really coming from our partners, and in many cases, we're working with a client, and they like the services we're providing, and they're making introductions to us, to other companies. And so I've got a company right now out of Portland that we're, we've termed Small Tools. I've got two builders that are putting proposals together to match them up with their clients. And so they're looking at building a small mini-business park. Next slide. We've been working on incentive programs for each jurisdiction and the state, meeting with staff in both cities, working with the port in terms of things that they, tools they may bring to the table for economic development, such as out at Stegawald. Many of you read an article about the waterfront. We've been helping the port where we can with some planning efforts. They have definitely been doing the heavy lifting. Where we're called in, we try to help out. We're still working on developing a strategic plan. We know Waschuggal is going through their strategic plan. Camas has done some strategic planning in the past. The port has completed strategic planning. That will be, after the website gets up, that'll be our next focus, is really to finish putting out that strategic plan. In terms of areas that we think we have a strategic advantage in, this is based on inquiries, businesses that we're working with that seem to have a pretty solid interest in the Camas-Washuggal area. It includes biomedical, advanced materials, technology, leveraging our technology sector, and the financial sector. We've developed a property inventory. We've been keeping that up to date as clients come to us and say, we need, we're looking for X number of acres, maybe five acres. What do you have that's five acres that would fit this type of use? We try to go out and provide them a list of those types of properties. If we can't find something, or if they're inquiring about a specific property, in some cases, it might be a gray area, and we've contacted the staff of both cities, and in some cases, actually have done site visits to see if that'll fit. A classic case is CID Bioscience, which is going into the American Legion Building in Camas. As you've driven by the little, or Baybrew Fields over there, you've probably seen a lot of construction. That was one where they do do some minor manufacturing, so they're building prototypes. But because that's ancillary to the overall function of the company, it was able to fit within a commercial zone. We've had some cases where it's not been a fit, and so we've been trying to find other spaces. We also work with area brokers to find out what properties are for lease. That way, when someone inquires, I need 2,500 square feet, what's available? We can provide them a list of spacing, a list of the asking lease terms. We stay out of the negotiations. We leave that up to the brokers and the professionals. We just want to be able to make sure that they can find what's available, and we can assist them as they need assistance, whether it's linking them up with other resources, sitting down with staff of either city, try to help them through the local permitting process, or in some cases, helping them through a state process. We've been assisting in the partnerships and planning efforts, again, working with Stegawald, working with the waterfront development. We've worked on some other planning processes in terms of our local business community or local developers, such as Wes Hickey, Matt Olson out at Camas Meadows, and other individuals that may have an idea. We try to, try to match them up with other partners, or try to figure out how we can make that work for them. Next slide. So regional economic conditions. As we all know, the recession started in spring of 2008. It started out affecting everyone about the same. After the capital crash in 2008, Clark County residents were affected to a greater degree than the region, state, and the nation. Our unemployment rate here in Clark County increased to a rate that was 50 percent greater than the region, the state, and the nation. By March of 2010, our unemployment rate was about 16 percent. Since April of 2010, our unemployment rate has been declining, following trends as the region, the state, and the nation. It looked like, as of September 2012, we don't know if this is an aberration or not, but our unemployment rate was only off by about 10 percent. So it was really close to the region, the state, and the nation. It could be a statistical aberration. We won't know until we get several months into this, probably about January, after you get the seasonal help, and things start to normalize around February, March, when we know truly where our unemployment rate lies. Next. Jobs, what happened with the job base? The greatest number of jobs, obviously, were lost between 2008 and 2009. The greatest number of jobs, obviously, were lost between 2008 and 2009. We had some minor job losses that occurred after that, and then a little bit of a stabilization in 2011. If you look at that period of time when we were losing jobs during this, what's been termed the Great Recession, about 5% of the job base just evaporated within a couple of years. By the end of 2012, however, looking at some of the preliminary numbers that might come to bear by the end of the year, it looks like about half those job losses will have been made up by the end of this year. Now, we'll say that those job losses, or those job gains, aren't necessarily in the same sectors where we saw losses. A prime example is Camas lost, and we'll see this on the next slide, Camas lost a significant number of jobs during the recession, but that gets offset by companies like Fisher Investment coming in. So, you're right, it's not a one-to-one ratio. Next slide. Which gets us into the Camas-Washougal area. Here in Washougal, the recession hit earlier. We saw this in school enrollments. The school enrollments here in the Washougal School District actually were declining, starting in 2006, and didn't start recovering until last year. In terms of job base, we saw the decline starting to occur in 2007. You were in the recession a year before everyone else, and Washougal is lagged by a year coming out of the recession. You had modest job gains in 2011. Also, the job losses here, if you look at it in percentage terms, is three times greater than anywhere else. You lost about 16% of your job base here, compared to 5% in other jurisdictions.
In the city of Washougal?
In the city of Washougal. We work closely with Scott Bailey, who's the labor economist with the state. He's assigned to Clark County. And so, he's actually broke down in terms of jobs that are covered by unemployment insurance, that's our best statistical measure. He's able to break that down by current city jurisdiction. And so, we get a good sense of what that job base looks like.
So, what did we lose?
We lost a lot of, like, advanced material-type manufacturing in particular. If you look at the St. Gobain Union Carby site, there were a significant number of jobs that were lost there. Even though that's a client that we've worked with, they've installed two machines, they're still only at a skeleton crew. They're constantly looking for customers to sell that product, they're building those supply chains, and we're still relatively bullish on what they're trying to do. We've got other partners involved, helping them, but they've not replaced the number of jobs that were there. If you look at the port of Camas-Washougal, that is about a third of your job base, it's about 30% of all jobs are there. There's about 40 employers, representing 720 jobs. Good wage jobs, average wage out in the port area is $50,000. So, those are good-paying jobs. The reason I mention that is, as we're planning for the Stegawald next expansion, many of the companies that we're talking to kind of fit into that same type of mold. Next slide. Also looked at permit valuation. Now, this is permits for buildings, and what happens when you're dealing with manufacturers is, manufacturing, most of their investment actually goes into the capital side, not the building side. And once a company is here, retooling and reinvesting, most of the time, does not occur into the building, it actually occurs in the equipment. So, you can have companies that are making investments, it's not going to show up here because they don't actually have to take a building permit out. They can go to LNI and get electrical permits and so forth. The good news is, looking at what's happened 2010, 2011, 2012, Washougal has had positive investment, so there has been some investment going on. We have seen companies expand. We are seeing companies that have announced expansion plans, and so the economy seems to stabilized here, and actually looks like it's growing. So, what do we do in terms of business development? We work on a full spectrum of business development, both retention, keeping companies here, helping companies expand, like Foods and Seasons, also luring new businesses into the area. Our businesses and services include looking at different sites, helping out with site location, helping out with regulatory guidance, looking at state incentives, permitting, workforce development, matching individuals up with financing. That could be just helping draw introductions with the SBA for low-interest loans. In terms of regulatory guidance, I'll pick on the old St. Gobain site. That was one where they were really nervous about meeting with any governmental entity. Once they did meet with Washougal staff, they came away pretty bullish about the city. It was a 45-minute meeting, and going into it, they were extremely nervous, coming out of it, they really liked it. They felt like they really got served. Unfortunately, on the state side, that didn't happen, and the big hang-up for them was getting a permit to discharge into the municipal sewer system. It's not that they're discharging toxins, it's actually, when they're producing Sapphire pools, they need to use water to cool down the machinery. Well, that water's not in contact, it goes down through a blow-down tower, becomes ambient temperature, it's got to go somewhere. And historically, it was just being discharged like stormwater. The state didn't like that, they actually wanted them to connect into the sewer system. They weren't particularly helpful. Mayor Guard was very helpful in this, and so was the governor. Governor actually made two calls to ecology. Five months later, they actually got their permit. That put them a little bit behind the eight ball in terms of hitting the marketplace, but they've been working through some of those issues. Local and regional site visits, we haven't really had to travel much outside of this area. Most of the clients that we're dealing with that are from outside Clark County have been very anxious to come here, and that provides us a strategic advantage. One, they're on the ground, we can sell the community pretty easily from that standpoint. And two, having them meet with the builders or the property owners about space, many times, they're able to negotiate a framework for trying to acquire that space, and so it's been very, very helpful. We had a client, three weeks ago, that was looking at space, and the building owner liked the company so much, they made an offer that I've just, I've never seen this before, but it is, from a cost standpoint, a very strategic advantage to getting the company out of the Seattle area. We're working mainly with small to medium-sized companies. We do have some larger accounts. Those larger accounts, we don't expect those investments to occur until late 2013, 2014. It takes them a year, year and a half to go through that planning, identify a site, figure out exactly their space needs. Some of the smaller to medium-sized companies tend to be a little bit more footloose, and they're able to make quicker decisions. Companies that we're working with range from medical to R&amp;D, alternative energy, traditional, manufacturing, retail, logistics, back office. For example, Innotech America is an Australian company. A couple was operating their whole North American logistics out of their home. They're in the process of expanding their product lines into all of North America. They need to hire a workforce, they need to take that business outside of their homes, and we're able to help them identify a site. We provide, all these companies that we work with, we provide sites both in Camas and Washougal. Even if a company says, "I want to go to Camas", we're providing a Washougal list of sites. If they say they want to go to Washougal, we're providing them a list of Camas sites, just so that they know the full spectrum of opportunities that are out for them. Facetall is a company we worked with. Early on, they wanted to be in downtown Camas. They had the space they wanted to be in, someone else had bought that space, then they started looking around. Ultimately, they ended up at the port, and they're out there. They had great lease terms, they really didn't need that high-retail presence. Most of their customers come to them, or they're actually going out to a job site. So, that was a definite win for Washougal in that respect. Next slide. So, last year, I presented three case studies of companies that we were working on. Business B was a 10-acre industrial park. The initial lead actually was generated through Columbia River Economic Development Council. It was a result of a foreign company that had interest in co-locating at this site. Company officials involved us early on in terms of, in terms of working with that company, trying to identify other business interests for their site. We've continued that relationship to this day. About a month ago, Mayor Guard was with myself, Innovate Washington, CRDC, Southwest Washington Workforce, a number of us, looking at this site. One of the ideas that came out of that meeting was trying to create some type of innovation center. And our thought is, this site provides so much at, I mean, it has as much power as wafer tech. It's fully plumbed for just about anything you can imagine. It's got clean rooms. It can be an innovation center for those stage-two companies, and then once they've grown to a size where they outstrip that space there, then you have Stegawald Industrial Park. And so, it's a way of trying to bring companies in, they can come in at an affordable price, and then as they grow and they need larger space, like we've seen companies like Foods and Seasons that have grown over time, then they have a place that's near where they've been doing business to expand into. Next. Business C is what we called Horiculture R&amp;D, that's CID Bioscience. That lead was generated from a local citizen and business owner. They were relocating out of the Camas Meadows to the American Legion Building. For them, they wanted to stay in the Camas-Washougal area, they just wanted to own property, not be a landlord. And so, we've worked with them early on in helping them resolve a minor environmental issue. The previous owner removed a heating tank, eating oil tank, forgot to get the certificates from the state, so they had to go back through, do all the soil sampling and everything. It prolonged the sale about three weeks, but they worked through it. We've helped them identify state and local incentives. They've had this idea of creating some type of export center. They're in 12 different foreign markets, they have some CNC machining capabilities. It's great for startup companies that can't afford to buy a CNC machine, can't afford to do some of that heavy lifting in terms of building prototypes, but they can leverage the knowledge of CID Bioscience. And so, that's one of the things that we've been working with. We've actually identified a startup that had taken a look, that's actually looking at the space right now. We'll know by the end of the month whether or not they'll go in there. And so, it's very promising technology. Next slide. So, I want to provide you a kind of a partial list of cases that we're working on. We have about three dozen companies that we're currently working with. Some of them have completed, like Sapphire Materials, that is a completed project. We're continuing to assist them in finding different companies they can partner with, try to sell their product. Facetall went into the port, Sharp Solar went into some empty space that Sharp Labs had. Foods and Seasons is underway with their construction. We have about seven different brew pubs that have shown interest. We know that we'll probably land four of those, and I would venture to guess, by, when everything's said and done, Washougal will have three to four brew pubs here in the downtown area. We've got a project where a client of ours needs five acres. They have some very specific needs, and they need access to Highway 14. So, we've been carrying them along, trying to identify sites. So far, we haven't found any. We're going to work with the port to maybe try to fit them out there in the new industrial park. There'll be some visibility and signage issues we'll need to resolve for that company. Project Trees is a company, that's one of these companies that the port and I are working together to try to land this company out in the industrial park. That's one where the company's lease is up in 2014, so they're already have contacted us, starting that planning. We're starting to help them, try to figure out different financing options and so forth. We had a company I spent quite a bit of time latter part of last year, working with, we called it Project Philanthropy. It was a company that was developing an app, and part of their business model was to take about half their net profits and reinvest those into charities. Altogether, if we look at our completed and underway projects, so projects that we know are going to happen, that represents about 200 jobs. 100 of those jobs are brand-new to the region. Next slide. So, what have we learned? The local business sector is actually doing quite well. It is stable. Now, it doesn't mean that every company in every jurisdiction's doing just really, really good. There are some companies that are still struggling. We're trying to match them up where we find out what's going on, if it's workforce-related, we try to match them up with Southwest Washington Workforce Development Council, try to get them incentives for job training and so forth if we can. Many businesses have been hiring. However, we're finding that, especially in the advanced materials manufacturing sector, they're having a hard time finding qualified individuals. Those are jobs that typically, over the last decade, were being shipped off to other countries for that production, as quality matters. So, we're talking about higher-end products where they're not operating on the margins, they're actually providing a product, and that product has to have quality for it to sell. Much of that manufacturing is actually starting to reshore back in the US. As that happens, they're finding a hard time finding qualified workforce. So, as you will begin to see, you'll see K-12 institutions like the Washougal School District start to put a focus back on trade schools. You've got the Clark County Skills Center, you've got Clark College itself as an institution. So, we're trying to draw as many of those linkages as possible for that workforce development. China's still a threat. It's not so much from a labor cost standpoint, it is more from an access to capital. We've had a number of manufacturers that cited that it's difficult to compete with some of the Chinese companies, as they're able just to go to the government, get a grant, buy equipment, and they're up and running. Their cost of entry is much lower than some of our companies, that their machine costs a million dollars just to install. Again, our best opportunities are small to mid-sized companies, with relatively high-profit margins. The reason for that is our tax structure. Here in Washington State, we operate off a gross receipts tax, so the higher your profit margin is, the better it is for our tax structure, because you're talking about fractions of percentages versus Oregon, where you're talking 6% corporate income tax. Next slide. I'll entertain questions and comments. One of the things I want to let you know is, and I let the port and city of Camas know this, beginning, or by January of next year, we're going to produce another report that will look at our caseload, look at those that were announced, completed, or currently underway, try to put together some type of economic impact report, so that you can get a sense of what is it we're working on, how does that ripple through to the rest of the economy? We've got some, a couple of major clients that are about to announce, and we want to try to get those folded in, so we can best represent what we've been doing over the last 12 months. So, with that, entertain any questions that you might have?
Rose, can we get some lights, please? Council questions. Brent?
How big are those major clients?
One is a biotech company, and it represents 50-plus jobs. They are relocating. Right now, they have their operations spread out in three different sites. They're consolidating most of their research, development, and administrative offices into one building. That building will be twice as much as they currently have. They're not going to relocate their distribution quite yet, because they want to be able to grow in their current building, and they're looking at other site opportunities in the Camas-Washougal area to carry that other function.
Speaking of site opportunities, is that a problem?
You know what? That's, we have enough land, it's the permit-ready piece of property. This is where opening Stegawald will give, from a manufacturing and a technology standpoint, these companies that only need a couple acres, or maybe upwards of five acres, Washougal will have a strategic advantage, because it'll have that product available. This is an area where Camas will continue to struggle because of wetland issues out on the west side. I would say stormwater is, has become more of a concern than wetlands. In terms of the biotech company I just mentioned, that was their first question, can we get through the stormwater regulations? If that was a no, we were off their, they weren't even going to take a look at us.
Impact fees, problem?
Impact fees, that's a mixed question. Both jurisdictions have done a lot to try to reduce those developer exactions, both the building permit fees and SDCs, system development charges and impact fees. They're handled different in both jurisdictions. If I'm a microbrewery, it's much cheaper to locate in Washougal than any other jurisdiction in this region, bar none. It's not even a comparison.
Why is that?
It's just the way, it's just a function of how you classify operations. Each jurisdiction will classify operations differently. If I go to Portland, it'll cost me roughly about $30,000, maybe $25,000, to put in a small microbrewery, because they do a surcharge to connect, handle that nutrient-enriched affluent. It's different for Camas, which is It's different for Camas, which is still higher than Washugal because of the way their sewer plant is set up. They need that nutrient to actually feed the microorganisms that break down the solids. So, it's different across the board. I would say if you take a quick cursory look, battleground is probably the most significant, albeit you can negotiate. So, it's, you might get this high bill, but you can negotiate your terms down. So, it's a little bit of a different process. Also, in terms of impact fees, like traffic impact fee, Camas uses a PM peak. So, if you're a manufacturer and you do a shift change at 3:30, like most manufacturers do, you don't have a traffic impact fee. Some jurisdictions, like Washugal, have an average daily trip. So, that becomes in more to play. There are other tools that you have at your disposal to try to mitigate those fees. And so, it's not, it's not a deal killer. We're not seeing that the impact fees are necessarily driving business away.
Not certain nature of building permit fees as well?
Absolutely. And, you know, the strategic advantage we have in both cities is a staff that responds very quickly. And there's, there's no hangups in either city. You can get a building permit very quickly in either city, much quicker than you can in Portland or Vancouver.
I have just one last question. I went to the A.D.C. Congress three weeks ago. And one of their major initiatives in A.D.C. is taking loans, taxing them, financing them in Washington. Now, I believe it, when I see it, if they pass it, it's just a piece of, we have it. Would you see a use for that here?
Yes, obviously, yes. I've seen it in other states that I've worked on in planning projects and so forth. I would say that there are a couple pieces of legislation that are being worked on right now. One is, in rural counties right now, you can utilize some funds that are driven off of the state sales tax, and that helps for infrastructure projects. It's only available to rural counties. That's actually in the process of being expanded to rural communities. And where the benefit of that is, is every small community here in Clark County has a rural area. Washugal has a rural area, the Port of Camas-Washugal Industrial Park. And so, the more that you can write down that infrastructure cost, the more that you're not putting it on to the business's balance sheet, the better it is to try to compete. We're working on some other incentives. Quite frankly, I'd like to see, I've talked to some of our legislators about reducing the BNO tax, but reducing it for new business development. So, just take a snapshot. So, if it's a business that's expanding, new business coming in, it's available to everybody, not just the big players, and try to spur more business development. And then, have a sunset so that you create that urgency to utilize that incentive. The sales tax exemption is a big incentive right now, especially for the manufacturing sector, being a distressed community. The manufacturing building itself, you don't have to pay the 8.4% sales tax. And on the equipment, you don't have to pay that sales tax. A brewery actually is manufacturing. So, when we saw like with Amnesia, I don't think West used it on the building. It wasn't enough in it for them to go through all the red tape, so to speak, layman's terms. On the equipment side, there was enough in it for the company to make use of it.
Other questions from council? Paul, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I have one question for you then. How can I be helpful to the city council? Is the annual reporting enough? Do you want a quarterly report in some written fashion? I just want to get a sense, are we servicing your needs? Or how can we be more responsive?
You must have read my mind. Actually, I am getting quite a few questions throughout the year from citizens as far as, you know, what's happening with the QEDA. You know, how many of these new companies or projects happening in the city? Can we, you know, attribute to the QEDA? And is our investment worth it and so on and so forth? So, yes, possibly something, you know, more frequently would be good and helpful.
Okay. We're certainly willing to do that.
I have one, sorry.
Dave?
I would just second that. Quarterly would be wonderful.
I give the board monthly updates. There's no reason why we can't put that into some type of quarterly report to give you a sense of what's going on. In many cases, like you saw our list here, if it's an active case, we're not going to disclose who that company is, but we can at least give you enough of a sense of what is, what we're dealing with in terms of types of companies and their needs that we're servicing. Defense.
When will we get the reporting that's required under your contract? In accordance with 53.08.24?
In terms of the economic impact and the benchmarks, as I mentioned earlier, that'll be January 2013. We want to close out the year. And so, that way, we have a full year of reporting, and then we'll produce that report.
Okay. Thank you.
I forgot, that's one thing. Is your focus entirely on producing what is known as base employment?
No, it runs the whole gamut.
One of the things here, you know, I had this reflection, like ran into Connie Joe for breakfast one time. There are only two places in Washugal you can really have breakfast on Saturday morning.
Right.
You know, we could use some more restaurants, more retail.
Absolutely.
That is really base employment, but it is sales tax revenue for the city.
Yeah.
I think it enhances our quality of life. Is that?
That's a great question. Unlike some of our other partners, which do have thresholds in the types of companies that they work with, any business that wants to contact us and needs help, if we can't directly assist them, we will put them in contact with individuals or organizations that can. You know, we've got someone right now that's looking to put in a food service-type business. And so, they're just in their beginning stages of doing market research and so forth. So, we're trying to provide them as much information as possible. And then, they'll make their determination whether or not they're going to locate that business. But in terms of restaurants, I get that quite often. Where do I go for lunch? Not just breakfast, where do I go for lunch? Where do I go for dinner? And just having multiple options, I think is very important.
Connie Joe?
You may not have the answer to this, but because I have a son with disabilities, do any of the jobs that you see coming into town, these companies have places for people with disabilities?
Some companies do. And usually, they'll work with either the state or Workforce Development Council for job placement. They like using some of those agencies as kind of a screening process to try to make sure that the individual has the skill set. Or it's just a way of them not having to be the burden of trying to carry it through all the applicants that they get. Because any one job opening, typically, these companies are getting 30, 40, maybe in some cases, 100 applicants. And, you know, over half those applications, it's individuals that aren't qualified. So, when they have those job opportunities, they're trying to work with some type of placement agency to find those individuals.
DVR, they probably do the same, go through some process. Are those people that are not qualified because of drugs?
No, it runs the gamut. We have a company right now that needs five C++ software programmers. That is a computer language that is a dinosaur these days with the advent of the internet and web-based programs and so forth. They need U.S. citizens that can clear, have defense clearance. And so, that just makes it that much difficult. So, they're on a nationwide search. They've pretty much tapped out this market. They try to, most of the companies, even the new ones that come in, try to hire locally first just because they know they can retain that workforce. If they can't do it locally, then they go out into other metro areas.
Well, so, do these companies automatically register with WorkSource, DVR, those different agencies? Or do those government agencies have to go to the company? Do you have an answer?
Most of them, if, it's more of a size component. So, if it's just a startup company, they may not know about those services. If it's a major employer, say 10 employees or more, they probably know about those services. And so, they're able to link in pretty quickly. Anytime I talk to a company, I'm always trying to figure out the full gamut of certain help they need. And then, like workforce development in particular, I'll bring in Southwest Workforce Development Council or someone else to try to help service those needs. Try to be the more of the facilitator rather than trying to do everything for every company. We've got a lot of talented people and resources available.
Other questions from council? Paul, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into new business. First item that we've got is the agreement between Camas Wash, or the city of Washugal and Economic Development Association. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, council. In your packet, there's a draft of the professional services agreement between the city and QEDA for next year. It's the similar scope of services to the existing agreement and the same cost to the city, $50,000. Based on the conversation that you just had, I will add in the scope of services quarterly reporting to the council in addition to that, to that annual report. And of course, the monthly reporting that happens to the board. And you can expect to see that updated then, as updated like that, professional services agreement next week on your action agenda.
Questions from council? Okay. Moving on to fire. Chief Swinhardt, Chief Schumacher, welcome.
Thank you. I can talk about dogs.
You don't have a Dalmatian?
One of the things that Chief Schumacher and I were tasked with doing when we started this merger, as you all recall, was providing periodic updates to the councils about the progress of the merger, any problems we were encountering, and also some financial analysis on how things were sort of washing out in the end. What we are here tonight to do is to kind of give you a snapshot in time of how the merger's gone for a six-month period, comparing the first six months of 2011, which you'll recall there was no merger in the first six months of 2011, to the first six months of 2012. So, we can see how things have sort of marched out so far. Keep in mind, as we go through this presentation, the numbers and the statistics you're seeing are only good up until the end of June of this last summer. And then, once we get a full year that we can compare, sometime in January or February of next year, we'll be running the numbers again to see how the numbers change. So, what you're looking at tonight is just a comparison of the first six months of 11 versus 12. Go ahead. I want to have you turn that just a little bit here, David. That's great, thank you. Just to refresh you on some of the milestones that we've experienced so far in the merger, just as a reminder to you all. In July of 2011, all paid staff up to the level of battalion chief were operationally combined between both the departments. In February 2012, Camas and Washugal approved forming the RFA Planning Committee, which we're in the process of right now. I think off the top of my head, we must be into our fourth or fifth meeting. We have another one coming up here at the end of November. March 2012 was when the two fire chief positions were consolidated. And Chief Schumacher, sitting here to my left, came over as the Camas Fire Department, Camas-Washugal Fire Department's First Division Chief and Fire Marshal. He's done a great job of organizing some of those programs and improving our inspection division quite a lot. April 2012, the overtime pools were combined between both departments. Now, that doesn't mean that we took money from both departments and just threw them into the same pot. What that means when we say overtime pools is that the lists that we hire off of when somebody's eligible for overtime, we combine those lists. The money still comes from two totally separate funds. And then, at the same time, when we did that, we had to start tracking how that overtime is utilized a little more differently, a little differently than it was done before. Because one thing that our two finance departments wanted to make sure of was that if we were, for instance, hiring a Washugal employee for a Camas overtime slot, that when we started looking at those numbers, that they weren't skewed improperly one way or another because that would be harder to justify if, for instance, if Washugal was paying for all the Camas overtime or something, or vice versa. And what we found, interestingly enough, is that so far, the overtime numbers have been marching out sort of like they should. And what I mean by that is Camas has approximately 80% of the employees. Washugal has about 20%. And the overtime has so far been falling right along those lines. 80% of the overtime has been allocated to Camas and about 20% to Washugal. But we're continuing to keep track of that on a month-by-month basis to make sure that doesn't skew one way or another. In May of 2012, Camas received the grant for three firefighters. And as I think I visited with this group when we first got that grant, keep in mind that that grant is an obligation to Camas because it was applied by Camas. Now, if by the time that grant ends, we have some sort of new entity, then the obligations of those grants would, which there really are none. I mean, we don't have to maintain anybody beyond two years, but there are some, some other smaller obligations that may exist. That would become an obligation of the new entity. So, in no cases is it an obligation to Washugal. In August of 2012, Camas passes the new EMS levy. And you may recall, and David will have a little presentation on this following my presentation, that it was passed at 46 cents per thousand. And, I'm sorry, okay. So far, things have been going quite well. If anything, I think Chief Schumacher would agree with me that we've experienced a lot fewer problems than we thought we were going to have. But that doesn't mean it's been trouble-free completely. And we have had some challenges that we experienced and continue to experience. The two chiefs early on in the process complicated things a bit because we found out very quickly that any decisions that we tried to make, if we wanted to try to change something between both departments or improve something, it had to go through two people. And if I was in a meeting, or Chief Schumacher was in a meeting, or one of us had the day off, the whole process of getting something new implemented took forever. So, that was one of the first things we noticed. Vacation slot scheduling was complicated initially because Camas personnel were allowed to take off more time than Washugal personnel. Overtime management was difficult due to the separate hiring pools. And as I mentioned in the last slide, the way that we've, we've tried to fix that is combining those two overtime hiring lists. And it certainly has made things flow a lot smoother. And administration, administrative oversight is still not perfect. And I'm sure some of you recognize that you don't see me here very often. This is one of the few times I've been over here for your meetings. And that's because the Camas meetings coincide typically with the Washugal meeting nights. So, Chief Schumacher tends to attend the Washugal meetings, and I tend to attend the Camas meetings. And so far, there's no other way around that. And that's just the way that we try to figure out how to do it and make sure we attend all the meetings we're supposed to. I can't attend Washugal Department Head meetings because they're the same time and day as Camas Department Head meetings. So, those are some of the challenges that we don't have immediate answers for. But with Chief Schumacher over here in Washugal managing a lot of that for me, we still make sure everything gets covered. And then, with things like the budget, especially this last budget cycle and preparing the budget for 2013, Chief Schumacher and I had to work quite closely together to craft that because he had created the previous budgets for several years and was familiar with all, what all the bars codes were utilized for here in Washugal. And so, I had to lean very heavily on him to make sure that that got done in an expeditious manner. And then, a big challenge that we had is we had up to nine personnel that were off on long-term leave in early 2012. We talked about in a previous meeting. And fortunately, we've got all but two of them back right now. But unfortunately, and then the other one should be coming back, we were expecting by the end of the year. But now, we've got another one. We just found out about, about a week ago, is going to be off for two months due to surgery. So, you sort of get a bunch of people back, and then sometimes you lose them due to injuries or disabilities. But fortunately, right now is the time when there's very little overtime used, very little vacation used. So, right now, as far as usage of overtime, things are pretty good right now. And we hope that it will stay that way as we enter the new year. So, one of the things I wanted to touch on with you briefly, and this is not by any means meant to be a very detailed financial analysis. Again, it's a snapshot in time. What we wanted to find out was how our expenditures have changed between the two departments in the first six months of 11, when there was no merger, to the first six months of 12, when there was a merger. And this is what we found. And Washugal is noted in that sort of aqua-green color, and Camas is noted in the blue color. We noted the general expenditures between both departments. Now, when you subtract out salary, benefits, overtime, insurance, and dispatch payments, we subtracted those out because we figured those are things we don't have any control over. Those are things that, that no matter how good of a budgeting process Chief Schumacher and I go through, we can't impact those. Those things that are tied to that, like contracts and so forth, and then insurance benefits, so we don't have any control over. So, when we subtracted out those uncontrollables, as we termed them, we noticed very slight differences overall in expenditures. Camas was, was almost infantismal. Washugal had a slightly larger drop, but it's still, it was not very significant. And don't worry about trying to read these bar graphs because I've totaled the numbers up for you on another slide. Sure.
Wouldn't overtime be a little impacted by having a merged park?
Would overtime be a little impacted by having a merged department?
And I've got overtime right here on this slide. And this is the overtime differences between both departments. And this is normalized for state wildland fire mobilization, long-term disability. And the reason that we had to do that is because state wildland mobilization is reimbursed by the government. So that's money that we put out now, but they're going to give us back. So we didn't count that. And we also had to subtract out long-term disability because we didn't have nine people off on disability in the first six months of 2011. So we had to subtract those out of the 2012 numbers. What that results in is a slight decrease in the overtime expenditures, especially in Camus, which was very, very little. Washougal, again, in the sort of green color, experienced a slightly larger drop in overtime. And we attribute that mostly to the loss of callback overtime that used to exist under the old system before the merger. So breaking it down on those bar graphs, what does that equate to? It equates to about a $96, $9700 change in Washougal expenditures, about a $3700 and $38 change in Camus expenditures, approximately a $17,500 change in Washougal overtime, and approximately $3,264 change in Camus overtime. There's some other soft costs that we had to add in there because they don't necessarily show up on the budget sheets. And that's funds that we would have had to have spent, or we figure we would have had to have spent if it weren't for this merger. And for instance, Camus, right off the top, shaved about $25,000 out of our expenditure budget because we didn't have to send these three new recruits to the State Academy, which in the past, we would have done, or we would have sent them to Vancouver's Academy. But in any case, we lose them for two to three months, and we have to pay their salary that whole time. And then, when they come back, and then there's the inherent cost of sending them as well. So the reason we didn't have to send them is because as a part of this merger, Captain Larry Sari, who was with Washougal, came over as the new training officer for the combined department. And now, with Captain Sari, working days as a training officer, we didn't have to send these people to the recruit academy. We trained them in-house, and that was something that Captain Sari organized. So that's $25,000 right there that Camus didn't have to spend. Camus also didn't have to spend about $3,500 in uniforms and turnouts. And that's because one of the people that we hired was Matt Baldwin, who was a Washougal volunteer. And he already had those things assigned to him as a Washougal volunteer, so we didn't have to go out and buy new ones. So these are things that don't show up on the budget spreadsheets, but they're things that we didn't end up having to spend that we probably would have. So it definitely represented a savings to Camus on those items. And then, Washougal noticed the savings when they didn't have to pay out that. So approximately, Ron, was it about 500 hours of overtime that changed from the lack of callback?
On the callback issue, we were averaging somewhere near 500 hours or so.
So it's about 500 hours less in overtime that Washougal paid because they no longer do the callbacks. And that's, they don't do the callbacks anymore because they have the increased staffing of the combined Camus personnel as well. So what does that add up to? That adds up to about $62,768 difference. Notice that I don't say savings, and there's a reason for that. It's a difference between the first six months of 11 compared to the first six months of 12. The reason I don't say savings is because we don't know why that difference is there. It may be attributable to the merger, but I can't tell you that for sure. All this is, is a very brief snapshot in time to show you how the financing has changed. Part of that could be due to the merger. If you ask me how much I think is due to the merger, I have no idea. I just don't want to speculate. All I know is that I think it's a fairly positive sign that the expenditures have changed in a good way. It doesn't appear to be costing us more right now. What we anticipate doing is that recognizing this is only six months, and it doesn't include a good chunk of the summer, once we get into January and February, we're going to sit down again and look at these numbers again for a full year. And then, we'll come back before you folks and go over the numbers again to see how they've changed and to see if things continue on a good trend, or if we noticed aberrations that we need to visit with you about and explain. So what have we done so far? What have we managed to accomplish besides this change in the numbers? Staffing at the Washougal station, this is the first big change that took place. Staffing at the Washougal station, 171 has doubled since the merger. Keep in mind that before the merger, the Washougal station had, at most, three people on duty. More typically, two people on duty, received three, I'm not counting that right. Yeah, three, fill in there.
Typically, we have three people assigned per shift, but 60-some percent of the time, we had two people on per shift. So currently, we have four people on per shift right now all the time.
So if you look at the minimums before, the bare minimum for Washougal 171 was two, and now it's a minimum of four. So that's the doubling of the staffing. The response times for the certain areas in Washougal have decreased because now there's a medic unit stationed here in downtown Washougal where before it was not. One thing that has helped out Camus and the EMS fund a great deal is that Washougal purchased a new ambulance and hired a new firefighter as part of this whole merger, which decreased the costs throughout the system and allowed us to be more efficient. And overall, the system has more personnel so it can absorb untoward staffing events like what happened in early 12, when we had nine people off on various forms of long-term leave or disability. And as Chief Schumacher pointed out to me before we came over here for this meeting, he pointed out this person that we found out just a week ago is going to be off for the next two months. If we didn't have this merger going right now, that would be two months that Washougal would be paying out overtime for this person. Because Washougal always had that minimum staffing, and they would have paid out substantial amounts of overtime right now to cover for that person. But now, they don't have to because we have this combined staffing and these additional personnel that they're not going to have to pay that overtime. So those are some of the ways that the system's able to absorb those changes a little bit more. And at the same time, we're always looking at ways, especially through seeking cooperation with the union and trying to find other ways that we can try to save on our expenditures. And thus far, they've been very helpful in meeting us in the middle and finding ways to help us save money for the system as well. So it's a work in progress. And again, it's a six-month comparison for you, but we told you we'd come in and give you these occasional updates. And that's what I wanted to present to you tonight. And here to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, Paul?
Not so much a question. I find this really useful. Not so much for the numbers, but because it shows me how you think about it, which is something I didn't really understand. And so, this is a big help. I want to thank you.
You bet. I'll throw one question out there that I got in Camus, and I think, I thought it was a great question. And some of you may have this question in the back of your mind. One of our council members in Camus said, well, I thought, I sort of, he was sort of disappointed. He said, I thought that there would be more savings. I thought that there would be like huge savings. And we haven't seen huge savings. And quite honestly, we never expected to see huge savings off the bat. This isn't like a corporate merger. When you pull two fire departments like this, two fire departments together like this, the more significant savings are additive. And they come several years down the road when equipment needs to be replaced. And you look at whether you need to buy a new $500,000 fire truck, or somebody retires and you see if they need to be replaced, given the larger size of the department. Those are where those savings come in. They don't come in, you know, you're not going to come into something like this and save millions of dollars in the first year. It just doesn't work like that. But, so I thought that was a good question. And I just explained to him, as I do to you here, is that those savings come in down the road as things progress more, and people leave and things need to be replaced. That's where we start to experience the larger price tag savings.
Following up on that, do you have any ability to estimate what the savings would be if the merger continued over, say, a 10-year period? Because I know the Congressional Budget Office can do that.
But you want to know about accuracy.
And I think that, Counselman Bogart, I think that that's something that can certainly be done. And I would sort of glance over at David here because we are about to have Paul Lewis come in and provide us a financial analysis. And I don't know if that's something that would be more in his wheelhouse than ours, or...
Well, the scope of work that your RFA Planning Committee is chartered with is to explore several different options, namely, an RFA and/or a longer-term consolidation approach. And so, the financial analysis for that is commencing as we speak, literally, I believe. And we'll look at projecting that out. I'm not sure exactly what the window of that projection is, if it's a 10-year window. I can certainly find out what Paul Lewis is envisioning for that.
A $1 million if it takes 12 years to a 12-year.
If that's the target.
Other questions? Joyce?
How is the morale of both fire departments in their merging together and working together?
Well, I'll have Chief Schumacher chime in here because I've only been leading the Washougal group for part of this year. But I can tell you over on the Camus side that things are good. People are very excited about the possibility and perhaps a little impatient, wanting to know why we haven't, some of them feel that we should be moving faster in trying to make this merger permanent. But they recognize that there's a heck of a lot of financial implications and studies that have to be done. And so, if anything, people are very anxious. They want things, they feel like they want things to move along faster. They enjoy what's happened so far. That's not to say that everybody's happy. I know that I've got at least a very small handful of people in Camus that are still not 100% pleased, but we're not going for 100% approval either. And I think that Chief Schumacher can echo something similar in Washougal, that the vast majority of people like what we're doing.
Thank you, Nick, Counsel. You know, when we first started this, one of the biggest hurdles, I thought, was going to be the name of the department. You know, what are we going to name this organization? And we opted on Camus-Washougal Fire Department, you know, and it rolls off the tongue a lot easier now than it did before. So I think that's a major hurdle that we've crossed right now. As far as morale in the department, I think, you know, some of our personnel aren't happy with it. But I believe the majority of them think it's a good deal. I think we're offering the citizens of Washougal a better service than we had in the past. But I do believe that the majority of our personnel are for the merger. They're looking forward to becoming one organization. And hopefully, that will happen sooner than later, so.
How are volunteer firefighters fitting into this merger?
The volunteers are, as far as where they fit in the organization, not much has changed. I believe they serve a bigger role than they have in the past because one of our firefighters is serving quite a bit of time out there in the Camus, one of the Camus Fire stations. And so, I believe that there hasn't been any changes to the role of the volunteers in our organization.
And one of the things that we're doing now, the volunteer organization is doing, is they've formed some new committees to look at their bylaws. And they've taken, one thing that I've appreciated seeing is they're taking a much more proactive approach in trying to improve their part of the organization in taking more direct control over how they bring volunteers in, how they advertise for new volunteers, how the process works of managing those personnel. I've tried to empower them with the ability to run their own organization, which is what it is. And so far, they've been stepping up to the challenge quite well. And we're looking at a few other things for 2013. For instance, one of them, perhaps what they call a resident or a sleeper program, that may be an added incentive for the volunteers. And we have to work out some of the details on that yet. But I'm excited so far. And I think that, again, the majority of the personnel are excited, and overall, the morale is quite good. And I think that one of the biggest fears that Ron and I had when we first started this was, I think we were kind of wondering how long it was going to be before we had to break up our first fistfight. And it just never happened. It just never happened. And people got along a lot better than we expected them to, and no huge, major issues came up. It was, I tell people, it was the little things that maybe we didn't expect, like we found out that the Washougal guys wore different uniforms during the day than the Camus guys did. And so, we had to deal with some of those small issues. But it was not huge operational things. It was not huge cultural things. So we've been very pleased so far.
Other questions from council? Dave?
I noticed on page one of the draft EMS agreement here, Washougal current levy is $50 per thousand of assessed value.
50 cents.
Say again?
50 cents per thousand.
Right.
If we were at $50, we'd be...
My apologies, 50 cents. On page four, under contributed funds, it says Washougal will contribute 35 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Is that because of the levy expiration? Or can you enlighten me on that?
It's not because of the expiration. We are maxed out on our EMS levy at 50 cents. And we use 25 cents of that levy to directly contribute to the EMS program and the special fund that is set up in Camus for that. And the other 25 cents is used in our general fire department budget and pays for basic life support, BLS-level EMS work. And it's supporting our basic crews and providing EMS services. We had a 10 cent per thousand lift, levy lid lift, it's expiring, and added to the 25 cents gave the 35 cents.
So we're betting on the come for the 10 cent levy lid lift to be renewed?
In 2013, we have adequate reserves in that EMS fund because of the supplanting dollars that we had to keep because of good times.
To cover 2013.
In '06, '07. And we have more than enough in reserves to cover our obligation to the partnership for EMS, as well as transfer to the general fund to support our fire department program.
For what period will those reserves suffice for that?
They will suffice probably for a couple months into '14. It depends on exactly how that plays out. But in 2013, one of several questions that will be important for the council to address will be finding that 10 cents so that we can continue to do that because it is expiring at the end of this year. So exactly what form that will take and how you want to ask the voters about that will be a decision that will need to be made in '13. But part and parcel with that as we go is this RFA planning process. And so, that's a parallel and important track that will guide the conversation. Because if it looks like we're going out with an RFA question, that may change the approach that the council would take with respect to that issue, or it may not. So there's a lot of moving parts right now with respect to this issue. Definitely on the team's radar. Definitely something that we will ensure is addressed in the time that we have.
And because I've got my fingers in all these moving parts, that's my concern. I don't want to see this thing jam up and get my fingers caught. I'd like to see us go through this as smoothly as possible. Any idea when we'll have an approach to this?
I think that as we come out of the first quarter, we'll have to begin having those conversations, probably in the late part of the first quarter in 2013. You'll have, hopefully by then, adopted a strategic plan. You'll have in front of you a number of questions about priorities and what types of funding sources you might be interested in. And I think that will inform your conversation and decision about how to approach this particular program. And I think it'll be important for the council to have all of that information in front of you as you tackle that. But yes, it's, our plan has been to begin those conversations middle to later part of the first quarter of 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of big pieces of information that are going to roll themselves into that, quite frankly, are going to be the more up-to-date projections that Paul Lewis is doing for us on the RFA scenarios and/or whatever that may become. And then, likely some additional work that we'll ask him to do as well for Washougal in regards to the feasibility of going back out in '13 to begin in '14 for an additional lid lift or some other mechanism. There may be something through that RFA process that everything becomes whole as well, so...
That's a, thank you, Mayor, for that reminder. One of the issues with respect to the lid lift is you have to have something to lift. We're capped at a rate right now, so there's nowhere to go. So right now, as we speak, we couldn't ask the voters to lift.
It wouldn't do us any good.
We could do it, but it wouldn't do us any good. The cost of the election would cost more than the revenue. Although, if you, you know, prospected that for six years, I don't know if it'd be prudent to ask for something that you don't know is going to provide the revenue that you need. We do have some preliminary work from Paul that he did earlier in '12 that we will be bringing to the council when we get bringing to the council when we get into that conversation of a wide variety of tools that will be, that are currently available to the council if that tool is not available. And you'll be able to sort through all of those and decide which one is the most palatable for you and the community.
Paul?
I don't, I don't quite understand, in fact, I don't understand at all, the limitation on going out for a lid lift. Can you explain that to me?
Well, the tax rate that we can assess is a function of our assessed valuation and the growth that you can have in that, which is capped at 1% per year. It's, it's not a function of the rate itself. The rate is back calculated based on the assessed valuation.
Right.
So if, if your assessed value correlates to a rate of, say, 290, like it used to be in the, in the good old days and still brought, you know, adequate revenues, you could, you could increase that by 1%, but you could ask the voters to add a dime to that and to go to $3, because there was room within your, within your limit to do that increase, but it would be outside of the, of the standard statutory limit upon your general levy. So you could ask to lift it beyond that, and that's, that's the tool that we have.
So, so you cannot go to the voters to get a levy beyond the $3.50 statutory limit?
$3.60.
The $3.60.
$3.60.
It's $3.60 minus whatever the library's doing, when right now, they're capped at that 50, and then in fact, they're at 50. They may not be getting 50, but I'm not aware, I'll have to, I don't have Paul's document in front of me to, to say with absolute certainty that there isn't a general levy mechanism that goes beyond that, because there are some public safety options.
That's what I thought.
But they're, they're also in sales tax, and I want to make sure I answer that question well for you. But the specific vehicle that we used, that this community has used over the last six years would not be available to us right now. We couldn't ask the voters for that because we are capped.
Okay. Yeah, I, my memory is foggy because this is, you know, five or six years old, but I thought that by going to the voters, we could get specifically an EMS, emergency services levy over and above the statutory limit.
Well, we do have the 50 cent levy, which is outside of...
No, I meant the $3.60 limit.
I'll get back to you on that.
Great, thank you.
Let's just make sure that Paul has that well lined up.
Right, and I have that information, and I apologize. I just can't remember the answer off the top of my head.
I can't remember it either.
Yeah.
We won't make it any more confusing by saying it's not actually $3.60, it's $3.37.7 cents?
If there isn't a...
But anyway, if there's no library.
We won't.
Hi, Joe?
I just want to commend you gentlemen, fire chiefs. I think the merger is going well because every time I see the two of you make a presentation, you seem to have worked so beautifully together. And that doesn't mean that you didn't probably go head-to-head on things, but you certainly seem, oh, see? See the eyes? You certainly seem to represent a consolidated front, and your men, do we have any women?
Yep.
And women, I'm sure feel that coming from you guys. So I appreciate that, because I'm on the Public Safety Committee, I'm on the RFA Committee, and so I hear from you guys in different venues, and I just appreciate you, your professionalism, and I know your men do too, or your people do. So thank you.
Any other items from council? Couple of quick points that I'm going to make and then that I want to kind of take this out of, out of the role we normally would and ask a couple of our gentlemen that are here this evening as well to, to speak in. On the volunteers, you will likely see a couple of items coming forth in 2013. As you, some of you may know, hopefully all you know, through our audit this last year, one of the things that state auditors asked us to do was to put together a more formal agreement between the city and the volunteer firefighters so that we can recognize them for what they do, the contributions to the city, the services that they give us in exchange for the dollars that we have in the budget that you'll have before you this evening, tonight as well, and that you've always had in front of you. So that is an item that you'll see coming forward, which quite frankly, will be fairly new. Another one, and the chief started in on it a little bit, in regards to the bylaws of the volunteers, we have asked them to go back and do some work on those and update those and bring those in. One of the items that, that was surprising even for myself to find out is, in the bylaws, because of the, of the time when they were written and are still in place, to some degree, our fire chief doesn't have the ability to discipline volunteers and/or disallow them use of facilities, equipment, that type of stuff. And I think I signaled pretty well to the volunteers that we needed to make a change on that, that if we've got them in our buildings, in our, in our engines, we're doing all those types of things, regardless what their bylaws say, the fire chiefs are in charge. So that's one thing that the volunteers are working very well to, to get those updated as well, and they recognize that that needs to be done. So that said, and I don't want to surprise anybody, including the chiefs, in regards to questions of morale or things that have to do with the volunteers as well, Kevin, Larry, Rod, any of you want to take a, just a quick moment at the, at the microphone and give any observations that...
Okay?
Just that I think that Chief Swinburne, it's fairly close to everybody, is it not everybody on board? It's working.
Sure. Any opportunity, right? Hear my own voice. As far as what you've said, I think we're a very goal-motivated society, firefighters in general, and so we want to see this thing come to fruition a lot quicker than it has. I mean, a lot of us thought that when we introduced this concept in early 2011, that we'd have this done by summer of 2011. So we're, we're a very impatient group. Having said that, though, I think we've seen a lot of the hurdles that we've come across along the way, and those folks who have kind of pulled back and thought, "I'm not sure if I like where we're going with this thing." You know, just the, the slow process that we've taken, in my mind, has been very slow. I'm sure all of you think this is going at a light and speed. The slow process we've taken has moved this thing along to the, to the point where the majority, and I can't speak for everyone, we all know there are those who are still going to stand on the sidelines and wait, but the vast majority are on board, supportive, waiting for this thing to come together, looking for the opportunities that are, that are there to be had. So that's what I can say.
Appreciate that, Kevin, and Larry, and Rod as well. Certainly, none of us have lost sight of the end goal, which is making sure that we're saving lives and buildings, and everything that we can do to, to get it towards that are appreciated from everybody's efforts, so... Okay, any last questions from council in regards to the chiefs on the interlocal agreement? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public works?
Mayor, I probably just need to spend a couple minutes, if I could, on the interlocal.
Okay.
So council, in your packet is a draft interlocal agreement. It's a three-party agreement, and it'll be on your action agenda next week. As you know, we're in a three-party agreement between CAMUS-Washougal and East County Fire and Rescue for EMS services, not EMAS services, just EMS services. That expires at the end of this year, and the draft that you have, which has had workshop with the CAMUS council, and I believe has been to the ECFER board as well, is for a two-year extension. You'll note that it's not a six-year, another six-year agreement, and the reason it is not a six-year agreement and is a two-year agreement is because of everything we were talking about, respect to the RFA and our, our joint planning efforts and the uncertainty about exactly what type of organization or what we will be doing. And so it was felt that the best approach would be to extend this for two years during the pendency of our mutual evaluation and then take care of it as, as we reach conclusion on that. Important, I think, most important for us is, what are the financial terms of the agreement? And the financial terms of the agreement are unchanged. They stay at 35 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation. That's exactly what it is right now, and it will continue that way for the next two years. And in fact, that is the case for East County as well. In fact, their levy, I believe, goes through 2014, and that in part was the motivation for that number staying the same, since they won't be asking their constituents about that for another couple of years. However, as you know, CAMUS's levy is not on the same cycle as ours or East County's, and they recently passed a 46 cent per $1,000 of assessed valuation levy, and this agreement acknowledges that that's what, that's what they're doing. So you'll have 35 cents from ECFER and from Washougal and 46 cents from CAMUS for the duration of this two-year agreement. Also important is that the agreement acknowledges our trial consolidation, it acknowledges our regional fire authority planning effort, and it indicates that the results of that effort will point to an update to this agreement. So we would, it's like an automatic opener, if you would, that we'll come back together and take care of this document and our, our partnership in the, in the correct way as a function of what we mutually agree to with respect to the RFA or a longer-term consolidation. The interlocal agreement is part of your packet in your Dropbox, and next week, we'll be asking you to authorize the mayor to enter into that two-year extension, authorize him to sign the interlocal agreement. That's it on that.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Do we want to take a quick five-minute break? We're in tower 45N, and we're probably going to have a bit longer to go. Okay, so if we could take a five-minute break and be back here at, at, call it 7:40, 7:50. Let's call it 7:50.